Greetings, everyone. I'm Bob McHale, president of the Northeast Vienna Citizens Association. Thank you so much for coming tonight. We're hosting the forum and our association remains active in many things of concern to the town. This being an example. Our purpose by our bylaws is to promote the civic and community interests of the members of the general and the general welfare of the Northeast area for charitable and educational purposes. We welcome anyone to join Nevca, not just those from the Northeast. And you can join us by just going online to Nevca.org to learn how. If you're interested in serving, you can just email us at info@nevca.org. To the table and back, you'll find information on some of our ongoing activities and copies of the Notes newsletter, which went out just a couple of weeks ago, mailed to 600-plus Northeast Vienna homes and is online now as well at Nevca.org. There you'll find answers by the candidates to the question, "Why you should vote for me." We welcome those who are watching the live broadcast on the Town of Vienna Community Network TVCN, Channel 27 on Cox or Channel 38 on Verizon, or are viewing the livestream online at vienna.gov/tvcn. This forum tonight is structured, and the candidates have already pulled their names out of the hat to determine their order. There are seven candidates on the ballot. As of 20, as of, as in 2023, when the mayor's seat was uncontested, the question-answer period is confined to the contested council seats. We look forward, however, to again having Mayor Colbert speak at the start and at the end of the Q and A session. The same time allotted candidates for the contested seats. Pencils and cards have been distributed, and I think you've all had a chance to write some questions for the candidates. Please continue to pass your questions, if you have any, to our Bob Robinson, who's right back there. Hand up in case you haven't yet, and to forward your questions to the moderator's table. It's worth noting, and lastly, that honor before Election Day, November 4th, you can vote for up to six candidates for Vienna Town Council. Vote for no more than six candidates. Welcome candidates. To moderate tonight's forum, we have Nevca's Chuck Brown. So thanks, Chuck, and thanks, everyone, for coming.
Hello and good evening, everybody. I'm Chuck Brown. I'll be moderating the debate for tonight. I do want to introduce our other moderating team, Mary Ellen Larkins, former, wonderful, past Vienna Town Councilman Steve Potter, Planning Commission Board Member Steve Kinney, and important to us for tonight, Ray Dally, who is on the clock, keeping on us. All right, we were gonna, we are gonna start with the opening statement from the mayor and the candidates. Each candidate and the mayor will have two minutes for their opening statements. So, Mary Colbert, start with you, please.
Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for coming, and thank you to Nevca and to the moderators and everybody who puts this together. It's always a great event. Just want to say that I am very honored and privileged to serve as the Vienna mayor, and I always do, I never take this position for granted. I just want everyone to know that. Back in 2020, when I ran, I ran on three things: beautification, communication, and transportation. And I am, I think we've made some good strides, and we're gonna continue to improve. Communication, we have the Connect app. We have, we're trying to get a clear message out all the time, and we're working on ways to hear from you better and to really listen. Beautification, the Maple Avenue landscaping, maintaining all of our properties in town. Transportation, we have the light synchronization on Maple Avenue, and it's smart technology, so I won't get into that right now, but it's gonna be, continue to improve. Sidewalks, as you know, we put in a lot of sidewalks and a lot of crosswalks. And, of course, I will always work and say, "No casino," so that's something that I will continue to work on. And the WOD restoration, a lot of trees were lost, we had a lot of vegetation lost, but I'm continuing to work with Nova Parks and also Dominion. Okay, pool and fitness center, very exciting for our town. This is something that will serve all ages and all abilities. And what's gonna happen next is you're gonna be involved. Everybody's gonna be involved in this. If we go out to design, then we will hear from residents. The design you saw originally is just scratch. We will have plenty of time to give input to that. I want everyone to know that our town is in very good financial standing. Out of 323 localities in Virginia, only 10 of them have a AAA bond rating, and we are one of them, okay? So we are doing great. What that does for us is it gives us the best possible credit rating. So when we borrow money, we get very low interest rates, and that's really important. So I, I'm happy to be here tonight. I'm looking forward to hearing from the candidates. I feel like the last two years, this council has done many, many good things for our town. And we have Councilmember Ray Brill, who is not running tonight, but I've really enjoyed working with him, and he's done a lot of great things for our town. We also have two new candidates, and I think they are very qualified, and I will say, I think they're also very good quality people. And so I'm looking forward to seeing them do well. All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Howard Springsteen.
Thank you, Linda. Wait for the timer to start. I'm Howard Springsteen. I'm running for reelection because I want to continue to make a difference here in Vienna. My voting record, common sense approach, responsiveness, speech of the passion and commitment I bring to the citizens of Nevca-related priorities and the town priorities. These past two years, I opposed a proposed Tyson's Casino, strongly supported the establishment of the Tree Advisory Committee, followed up on the upgrade of the traffic lights on all Maple Avenue to improve the flow of traffic, supported the Church and Glidden Street Improvement Project. I've also encouraged the proactive maintenance of Vienna infrastructure, particularly the water and sewer systems, and maintaining a stable rate of town. I want to deviate my prepared remarks and just go on a little side note. Most of you know I'm involved with the Vienna Fire Department, been there for years, I'm the oldest member, and one of the things we do is we take sand out in the 46th fire truck. And if you notice, Councilman Anderson filled in for Santa once or twice last year, and it broke down, so that was an issue. And so when I was president, we spent $130,000 to rebuild this thing. It's kind of falling apart. So there's an appeal out there, I think, is the Vienna Fire Department 46th Committeeing, but we have it at this really specialized vehicle repair shop out in Winchester. They're doing over 50 vehicles there, including ours, and there's a special campaign where 85%. Mr. Wright, I think they used it for your wedding, and he indicated he wants to bring the, hit the 50%. So I think we're at 40, 45,000, but we're hoping to have this truck ready for not the Halloween, not for the holiday stroll, but the first weekend in December. So again, I just want a little shout out for that. I'm one of the five folks that can drive that, because it's a clutch. So just adding my remarks, I ask for your vote to continue to serve and address these areas. Thank you.
Okay, during the political system, season, my first name is Chews, and my second name is Chuck. I'm gonna give you the Reader's Digest version of my sort of past. I was born in rural Rust Virginia, raised in rural Michigan. I've lived in Vienna for 28 years, and I've served on the Town Council for the last five and a half years, and I served on the Planning Commission for eight years before that. Right now, I'm spending a lot of time on two important initiatives. One is I'm on the Steering Committee of the No Fairfax Casino Coalition, and I will be testifying in Richmond on Monday against the casino, representing the whole region. The other thing that I spend a lot of time on is, along with Tracy McCarty, I co-chair Vienna VA 250, which is basically our group that's gonna be celebrating our nation's 250th anniversary. We're organizing, you guys are gonna be celebrating, and we're just organizing. There's gonna be a lot of exciting things, including, I'm gonna put in a plug, next Saturday, from 2:00 to 4:00, Vienna at 1775, what it was like if you had walked down what is now Maple Avenue in 1775. We have scholars coming, and we're gonna have period-appropriate food, so I would definitely be there, because how often do you get onion pie? Anyway, rather than spend a lot of time on myself, I'll just say, if I were sitting in your chair, what I would be looking for are candidates who basically provide thoughtful answers with facts and figures. And I'd also essentially pay attention to how do they interact with the other candidates? The issues are important, but probably over half of the critical issues that the town will face in the coming two years aren't even known yet. So it's important to look at candidates as to how well they respond on their feet. So with that, I look forward to your questions, and let the games begin.
Good evening, thank you. I'm Doug Francis, and my wife and I have lived in town for almost 30 years. We raised our two great kids, who are here tonight. I decided to run for Town Council because I care deeply about maintaining and improving the future of Vienna for you, your family, and your friends. We've lived all over town, starting off renting a house on James Drive Southeast, buying a place on Commons Drive Northwest, and then moving across town to MacArthur Avenue Northeast. Commons Drive is near Madison High School. I served as president of the Vienna Commons Homeowners Association for four years. My first priority was a plan to address a daily parking problem with Madison students. We developed a street tree replacement plan, we replaced a 1960s-era neighborhood playground, and paid attention to our annual budget, including funds for future expenses. And I was responsible for negotiating contracts for the community's annual landscaping and snow removal. When we moved, I joined Nevca. Nevca was involved with VDOT's Beulah Road Project and Town's leaf mulching program. I learned a ton about VDOT, right-of-way's, utility poles, and the importance of working with the Town Council. Although Nevca has a loud voice, the council's clout kept Beulah Road feeling like a Vienna street rather than a three-lane commuter route. Full disclosure, I've been a member of Nevca for 20 years, and I serve as vice president. Some projects include flashing crosswalk signals at Air Hill and MacArthur, planting native plants in North Side Park. I was also the moderator of previous Meet the Candidates forums.
Two minutes.
I proposed the tree donation program to the Conservation and Sustainability Commission, and coached a Vienna lacrosse boys' team. I appreciate your vote on November 4th. Thanks.
Let's go to turn it on, step one. And by the way, Howard, I can operate a clutch, so if you need someone to fill in, you know? The beauty, the beauty of getting older, right? So, yeah, thanks for having me. I have to say, this is what I love about Vienna, just the enthusiasm. You guys are all here, all care, it's kind of pervasive throughout the town, but it seems like everything I get involved in is the same thing. So moved here about 21 years ago. My wife and I came from Chicago, I'll get to that in a minute. So anyway, we here 21 years, raised three kids here, went through all the schools, Vienna Elementary, across the street, the road, Madison High School. Our youngest is a senior now at Madison. So grew up in the Herning Resting Area, went to Virginia Tech, graduated architecture degree, did that for a while, then got into construction, enjoyed that much more, did that for a while, went out to Chicago with Clark Construction, worked on the Midway Airport Project, and while there, went to law school. We decided to move back here when we were starting a family to be near grandparents, picked Vienna because we thought it was somewhat centrally located, all the major arteries, and having worked kind of all over the area, that's true. So it's worked out great. Couldn't be happier that we picked Vienna. It's been a great place to raise our family and put down roots, and we're here to stay. So with that, sorry. Yeah, so the thing about construction, I guess the reason I keep kind of coming back to construction, because after I came back here and did litigation for a while, then I went back into construction, is just what I've always enjoyed about it, was just you get a team together and you work towards like one tangible goal to create that as a team. And I just enjoyed that process over and over and over, and I think that's what I'm gonna look forward to, being in Town Council, assuming I get elected. So I think I bring sort of a unique combination of professional background that maybe others don't have, which kind of allows me to kind of see things through maybe sort of a business lens. The other thing I kind of is unique, I think, about my situation is, even though I'm not an incumbent, I have been on the BZA for the last five years, and so I kind of know how the town works, and I look forward to working with everybody up here. Thanks.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jessica Remakis. I am very honored to serve on the Town Council currently. I took the oath of office in January 2024, so I'm in my first term, and I'm running for reelection. My husband and I moved to Vienna in 2010. We were looking at different communities in the area and chose Vienna because of a number of its really special qualities. First, the beautiful parks and trees. The mature trees that we have here in the community just bring a lovely charm, which really drew us here. Another really attractive thing about Vienna to us was the small business community, the businesses that bring so much to our community, that you can go out, live in a beautiful place like Vienna, and go out to eat in a local restaurant or go shop local. That, to me, was really exciting. And then you can feel the sense of community just driving through the town. And so for us, trying to find a place to raise our family, those were things that really attracted us to Vienna. Now, where our children are in middle school and elementary school, my daughter's playing softball at practice on Caffey Field, not far from here, and we've just been so fortunate to have so much wonderful community in Vienna and also to contribute in different ways. One of the reasons that I was motivated to run for council was to do more about communication in the town. We have so many thoughtful people in our community who have great ideas, and we don't always have the same point of view, and I think that's energizing and important. And so for me, running for council, to hear those different points of view, that is something that, as a council member, I have sought, different points of view on issues when we're weighing them on council. And I'll continue to work on that if I'm reelected. I have had a strong service orientation for many years, a life in public service for over 20 years, and I'm really fortunate to serve on council. So thank you for your consideration, and I would appreciate your vote.
My name, my name is Sandra Allen. I've been here for two years, and I am the first Hispanic member of the Town Council ever in the history of the town. I have been advocating from, I came in here because there were reasons that brought me here, the fact that there was, there were people around my neighborhood that needed help, and they weren't being heard. Myself needed help, and the council was not accepting or being, hearing my needs in the community. Let me go back a little bit. I, I live in a multi-age home. I live with my mother, who is 90 years old. I live with my, my two older sons live with us, and we have two dogs. The reason that I brought my family into the picture here is because my mother lives here, and like her, she needs assistance in the community. And when the community, when the elderly community here needed help, there was not a single council member that stepped up and spoke on behalf in Fairfax County. I invited them. Also, we have elderly that have come complaining with their issues and concerns. I stepped up, I talked to council, tried to work with them, and they have not stepped up to the plate. So why I'm here is because there are voices in this community that are not being represented, voices like me are not being represented. I have lived here for 24 years, with my children going to all the sports, BML, BYI, everything, went to school, and at every point that I was present, there was not a Hispanic representative there. And when I spoke up and I volunteer, I was met with a lot of obstacles. But when I finally got the minority achievement representative at James Madison, I did, I did make changes, and I hope you vote for me because of what I, things I have done in the community and what you have seen me do while I was sitting in council. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Nevca, for having us back. The last time was in October 2023, and my, how the world has changed since then. The new Town Council will have to steer this little town through some really choppy waters. We're going to have challenges that will come up, that will, that will challenge us all, and we're going to need the best team we can put together to deal with them. I'm asking to be reelected so I can be part of that team to do just that, and I believe that I'm better qualified now and better able to do that job than I was two years ago, just because of the experience that I've been able to get to accomplish while being on the council this past year and a half. I know a lot more now about how the town works and how to get things done, thanks in no small part to Ray Brill. Ray, you're, you may be off the council, but you're gonna be like Yoda. We're going to, we're going to consult you. Plus, I've been making friends and establishing contacts that will benefit the town in a tangible way. For instance, I'm honored to, to, to notice that our, our delegate, Holly Sebold, is here, and I think she deserves a round of applause for all that she does for this town. And I'm also very happy and honored to note that just this afternoon, I received her endorsement for my reelection. That shows you what I think I can bring to this task, to be a part of this team. We're gonna have to do a lot of work down in Richmond to, to help our town. As for my experience and qualifications, I'll just refer to the handout that I put on, on your, your, your seats. If you reelect me, I've got all kinds of things I need to get done for you. The most important, I think, will be to try to finally get an answer about what to do with the Beulah Road property, but we'll have more as the night progresses. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, wonderful. We're gonna proceed into the questions and the responses from the candidates. We'll have a rotating response or rebuttal from the different candidates, so you'll see how this will follow. First, I'm gonna go through the forum rules for the debate itself. Prohibited from the debate: inflammatory hateful comments related to race, gender, sexual orientation, religion, or age; prohibited personal attacks, name-calling or belittling another member; no use of profanity at any time; inappropriate sexual references or terminology; also prohibited questioning moderator or administrator in a debate topic. For the tactics, things for us to keep in mind: there are no winners here. Winners will be determined at the polls on November 4th. Twisting people's words or quoting them out of context is misleading and not constructive. Please avoid blanket statements that focus on a broad topic and not the specific subject at hand. Please follow the rules. And credibility for each candidate. Establishing credibility takes time. There is, however, a lot you can do to help speed the process along. Cite your sources and be prepared to back up your argument. Avoid use of unsupported blanket statements, and you can disagree without being disagreeable. All right, wonderful. So we're gonna start with the first question for tonight, and we're gonna start here on this end of the table. We're gonna work ourselves all the way down to the far end of the table. Each candidate will have one minute, and for this round, Doug Francis will have one minute as their rebuttal. First question: for current council members, what is an achievement you are proud of accomplishing during your last term? And for candidates who have not yet served on a council, is there a specific goal or focus you would like to achieve in a potential council term? Roy, we're starting with you.
All right, well.
First response. One minute.
I would say, one of the accomplishments that I'm, I'm very proud of is the, the Tree Advisory Committee. I was a member of the team that put that together and voted on it, and in addition, I pressed for the tree preservation ordinance that we have now, which is the strongest ordinance that we can have under current state law. That's important because it will mean, not only will we have new incentive to take care of the trees the town owns, but also we'll be able to use that ordinance to make sure that developers, when they come and do a tear-down and put up a new house, will have to take steps to preserve signature trees. I'm sure that the Tree Advisory Committee and, and all their members are gonna be very busy, and I'm glad to have been able to, to give them the, the foundation for what they need to do.
Sandra.
Thank you. Let me tell you what I have done and I have accomplished. I accomplished, as a, as a team, we all went and voted against the no casino, and unfortunately, we are, only one person is allowed to speak on that behalf, and the mayor did a lot of the work. However, I did a walk around the neighborhood, and I got to meet a lot of people, and in many areas, the concern was trash and debris everywhere in our community, especially from the businesses. I spoke with that resident that came to me. I invited our council members, our new council members, and I don't believe they, they came, but I did invite some of the council members to speak with the resident in question. And through my efforts and my many emails that I sent, the, the issue was addressed. The landlord switched the trash cans, put a recyclable instead of having the debris that is often placed in there.
One minute.
Unfortunately, okay, well, it was resolved, and the homeowner was very satisfied with that. So I had addressed something, and I was very happy about that.
Jessica.
Thank you. A recent example comes to mind. I know we've had a lot of conversations recently in the community about what we can do to support our restaurants and our business community. I think we've heard a lot of, of feedback on that recently, and I have been reaching out to members of the business community, restaurants, listening to our Town Business Liaison Committee and to town staff, and thinking about ways that we can better support our businesses in town. So right now, we are working on the capital improvement plan, which is the way that we plan for long-term infrastructure investments in the town, and I've been really focused on how we can include elements in that plan that support our business community. So we will be talking more about that as a council on Monday, and also following, we'll be voting on that. But we reached agreement among a majority of us to include an item in the capital improvement plan to support streetscape improvements, which is something that was requested of our businesses. So that's a recent example of something I'm really proud to have done. Thank you.
Dan.
Yeah, I'd like to work on alternative revenue streams. So like Jessica was just saying, the meals tax funds capital improvement plan, but, and some of this is actually, if you go on the website, there is some of this, kind of unbeknownst to me, I sort of had this idea, and then I was doing some research and came across it. So there is some foundation for, for what I'm gonna talk about, but it seems to me, when I was in, working on the Pitt, International Pittsburgh Airport, the terminal modernization program, we had a position up there where a person just went around and solicited from large foundations for grants and money like that to kind of offset the cost of that program. And it seemed to me that that could easily be done here in Vienna, and so I was gonna look, try to work with the Economic Development Director. There's also a business engagement specialist, so I'll get with them to see if they've got that kind of time or bandwidth to get into. If not, maybe we can carve out a position to deal with that. But I think that's a great way to offset, instead of having to constantly raise the taxes, we can offset it with some alternative revenue streams.
Okay, Doug.
Okay, a specific goal that I want to achieve, really a priority for me, is to make sure that the investment that's been made on Maple Avenue over the past few years is completed as far as the streetlight synchronization program. There's technology that I see guys installing every day. I've been through a lot of traffic jams, and I want to make sure, as far as a goal, that that is taking and funneling the traffic through Vienna so it rolls. Currently, anybody who uses Google Maps in the room, which is probably in half the room, you've probably been funneled off or seen that it takes you off on East Street and down Church Street, and that has been a chronic problem for that community. These days, if you're coming down 123, it takes you on a left going down Niblick, and then you cut across that way to get the... So both routes through the Google Maps are sending you off of Maple Avenue. So my goal is to keep everybody on Maple Avenue and take the side traffic off. Thanks.
Chuck.
So, when I started thinking about whether or not to run for reelection, I went back and looked at my calendar to see what I had spent my time on in the past two, or four years now, five and a half, and there were three things that jumped out. One was protecting democracy at the local level through Liberty Amendments Month and through Vienna VA 250. The second thing, obviously, was the no casino. I've spent hundreds of hours on that. And the third is the one I'm probably most proud of and has the most upside, which is trying to convince Nova Parks to bring a WNOD Visitor Center to the heart of Vienna. I'm very excited about this because we have an opportunity to take a property that's blighted and that is underdeveloped and turn it into a magnet for tourists, for local businesses, and if we play our cards right, this will cost us very little. I have worked very hard to seek alternative sources of funds for this, and I'm just really, really excited about the possibility of the WNOD Visitor Center.
Howard.
Thank you. My four categories are, first, a zoning code update. We improved the zoning code from what it was. Stop traffic is much better. What my 17 years of experience as council to the table, to helping make decisions, I had pushed, we got successfully, the single utilization program, and I determined when the fire trucks go down, every major single on Maple Avenue, the lights will turn green. And so we have those at, and that's on every single to go with the new singleization. And the last thing was, I think, making the trains run in... Oh, sorry about that. Making the trains run in time, which means, you know, making sure the police department's functioning, public works, planning, zoning, recreation department, because there's a lot of things that happen behind the scenes that people take for granted, you know, our trash collection, you know? Our trash collection costs us nothing. If you're outside the town, you're paying $60 or $80 a day, sorry, a month. So, the people don't realize how good we have it with trash. So those are the four things I brought to the table.
Thank you. Yes, applause is fine. Applause for all the candidates, please, yes. Wonderful. All right, for our second question...
I think I get the bonus minute.
Oh, I'm saying, thank you. Doug, if you choose one minute for rebuttal, if you choose to.
Yeah, there's no rebuttal. I'm going to take it to, you know, really talk about adding trees along the streets here in Vienna. I think what we need to do is make a solid commitment to not just plant the trees, but maintain them. Going down Air Hill recently, I did notice that there were three trees that succumbed to the drought this summer, and I know that they're guaranteed for a year, but it is important that we keep that commitment moving forward. That's it.
Fantastic, thank you. All right, for our second question, we're actually going to start at the second candidate, move our way down the table, and then come back to Roy at the end. Here is the second question. Schools and churches are located in residential areas per zoning code. With the ever-increasing need for before-care, yep, there we go, after-care, and evening activities, what will you, as town council, do to ensure the increased noise, traffic, and parking doesn't adversely impact the surrounding neighborhood? Sandra, starting with you.
Wow, that's a tough question. Let me go back and express my concern about the noise. It's everywhere in the town of Vienna. It's in my backyard, especially in some of the areas of our residents who have been rioting for years about the noise of a school getting bigger and bigger, and they have not have any answers or resolutions. So with my, because the reason that I'm here is to represent you, and I've been talking and trying to address those issues on your behalf, and I respect the growth that is happening, however, when there are residents that are complaining, and they're asking for assistance from your government, and they're not being heard for years, there is a problem, and that's why I'm here. I'm here to make sure that if you have an issue, I'm here to make sure that that issue is resolved, but I can't do it alone. I have other six council members that need to do and react...
One minute.
...and respond to your needs, and I've been doing that.
Jessica.
Thank you. I appreciate the question, and it's a difficult one because of the impact, as you mentioned, in residential communities, but also for parents who are working and who have a need for childcare. So that is a real issue that is playing out in our community and in other communities as well. We have a way of reviewing requests that come through for childcare centers, and I pay close attention to those when they come through, to hear which residents are coming forward and sharing their thoughts, and which residents may not be coming to the public hearings, but who may have thoughts about it. So, I think that being able to listen to the concerns that are raised through those public hearings is really important, but also doing additional outreach to members of the community, including to those who have concerns. And that is something that I prioritize. That's one of the reasons that I want to serve, and I think it's something that we'll have to continue to monitor as these decisions come through to see if there are things we need to do to update our code. Thank you.
Dan.
This is a difficult issue, and it comes up fairly often. It's actually come before the BZA several times. Once you get to a certain size, when you go from four to 12 children, usually when it comes before us, and we have to decide if the traffic and those kind of issues are going to be kind of a burden on the neighborhood, obviously, you're trying to offset it, just like Jessica said, there is a need for affordable childcare that's very real, so that needs to be dealt with. It can't just be ignored, or it needs to be in somebody else's backyard. So, I think it's, needs to be kind of a balance. That's what we try to do on the BZA, is if there is already one on the street, then we try to, you know, not approve it and kind of control it that way. But I do think, kind of piggybacking on what Jessica said, I think more outreach and more like an event almost like this with the neighborhood, that we can kind of maybe moderate and say, hey, how can we work this out so that everybody can sort of get along, or at least hear somebody's, their concerns, and deal with it in that manner.
Childcare was certainly something that hit home for us, since we were both working, and our children needed to go to not just preschool and things like that, but after-school care. And we did take advantage of a bigger place, which is over by Louise Archer at one point in time, but then we also dealt with small neighborhood care. And that's one of the things I think we're going to see more of taking place. We're going to see people with that four and under group. The threshold for county to get involved in licensing is after four children. So, looking at planning and zoning, that's one of those things that's their department, and I look forward to working with them when somebody wants to propose a bigger childcare program here in the town of Vienna.
Chuck.
So this is the kind of an issue where the rubber meets the road, and this is when it's, you earn your money, which is very little, being a town council member, because what you're trying to do is balance the needs of the community, and here are two very important needs. One is for peace and quiet, but the other are for the types of social cares that are increasingly being provided by churches, faith organizations, schools, and the like. And it's our responsibility to listen to all sides. There is, there are procedures for these kinds of things because a church or a school cannot automatically run those programs. They have to have a conditional use permit. They go in front of the Planning Commission, Jessica was a member, I was a member, they go before the BZA, and the public can be heard. And I, my impression has always been that the people who serve on these boards and commissions are very thoughtful and do a pretty good job of striking that balance.
Howard.
Last one. Again, I think we need to listen to the community, see what their concerns are. The Border Zoning Appeals does a very good job for daycares, you know? You look at their decisions, they're reasonable, balancing the neighborhood and what the daycare needs, but many times they turn them down now. I look at, we do have some issues with green hedges, they're trying to expand. We need to listen to the residents there and figure out what's going on. School's going to have to exist, but you have to exist in neighborhoods. So I think, Councilman Jessica, she said, is, we need to listen to both sides and try to come up with a good balance.
Wonderful. Roy.
Well, first of all, just as an overview, we have a zoning ordinance, which is quite specific as to where a daycare center or before and after-school center can be placed and where it cannot. And as Councilmember Anderson pointed out, if you need a permit, you have to go to the Planning Commission. If they say no, you can appeal to the Border Zoning Appeals. And I want to say that, in reference to Dan Nash, I sat in on a meeting, as you remember, of the BZA just a few months ago, and I was really very impressed at the thoughtful way that you handled an appeal of a small in-house operation. The point is that the town council can update the town code. We can do that if we hear from residents that it needs to be done, but that's our role on the town council.
Chuck Anderson, do you have one minute for rebuttal, if you choose to?
I don't think there's a whole lot to rebut here. I'll just say that I can see both sides of this issue. You know, I live only a block away from the commercial district, so I'm very sensitive to noise. I also serve as a head chef at my church, where we cook for 600 people every other week, and we really try to meet a social need. So again, I go back to the, you know, the need to be careful and thoughtful, allow all people to enter in these conversations, to come up with a reasonable balance.
Okay, thank you. All right, so, third question, we are going to start with Jessica, work our way down the table, and for this round, Howard will have one minute for rebuttal. Third question is, we have some long-term idle or empty properties on Maple Avenue, including 444 Maple Avenue, site of the old Wolf Trap Motel and Tequila Grande Restaurant, and the empty storefronts of Vienna Market near Pleasant Street. What would you do to address these vacancies? Jessica.
Thank you for this important question. I'm personally quite concerned about the two projects that you mentioned, and during my time on council, have been asking questions and seeking answers for what we can do. And in some cases where there was already an approval for 444, what we can do is continue to encourage the owner of the property to move forward with their project, knowing that it was already approved. I think there are some lessons learned there of, when there is an approval, to have a time-bound element to it, that something should happen, and that the approval will not be active anymore if there isn't building happening. It concerns me that when we drive into our wonderful town, that that is the site that is there with so much potential, but nothing happening. So I appreciate the work of the town staff in making it be at least maintained in a way that looks all right to come into town, but it's not, again, fulfilling its potential. So I think there's more we can do there in terms of projects that will be approved in the future.
Dan.
Yeah, that's another tricky situation, but I think the thing that the lesson learned there, kind of, they've been before us, and then they kind of went away from us as far as dealing with the town, as far as getting a timetable of when to kind of correct that situation and make it a little bit better. So you've probably seen a better fence, and they kind of straightened it up while they kind of got their financial act together, and then they're on a path, is what I'm told, to kind of eventually get it developed. But maybe the lesson learned there is to go ahead and get all that committed upfront and get some actual real penalties if things don't go as they're supposed to go. Having said that, I would also say that I think making things a little more developer-friendly for some folks is a good way to get some of this stuff going. There are a lot of areas that are kind of sitting undeveloped or could be redeveloped throughout the town, and I think just from companies I've dealt with, they find it very difficult to work in Vienna, so they kind of steer clear. So, I'm not saying we definitely change our standards, but I think we need to kind of involve them of how we go through the process.
Doug.
Well, the 444 property has come up every time I sit and eat lunch at Hawken Griffin outside, and it's always like, what the heck is with that property over there? The, you know, I've read through a lot of the material on that, and that particular developer in New Jersey is just kind of sitting back almost with a monopoly piece. I don't think they have any incentive or motivation to move forward with that property, and they're just doing a disfavor to our town. I think what's going to happen is that the town will have to take some sort of action legally to get them to move. I don't think the town council is going to work. I think they respond to our town attorney. Thanks.
Chuck.
Okay, these two locations are near dear to my heart because I was one of the leaders of the, we don't think the Maple Avenue Corridor District statute is written properly, and it basically is going to lead to some bad results. And one of the things, before I got on council, I urged the council to do, is to put a two-year clock on any new zoning under the MAC. That is, if the developers did not move forward with their approved plan within two years, then the town would have the right to revert to the old zoning. Unfortunately, that did not pass. With respect to the Vienna Market, there was always a problem in that it was way over, tilted towards residential as opposed to commercial, and they ended up with substandard residential, something called black retail in the business, and unfortunately, legally, we don't have a lot of recourse other than sue, and I believe we're taking those steps.
Howard.
We actually have two issues here. The old Marco Polo, the problem there is the residents can move in, but we're not giving a CEO for the businesses because they agreed to all these improvements. We're sitting on a bond, and if we pull the bond, we have to make up the difference. The bond's not high enough. We made a mistake. The bond shouldn't hire. But the problem is, the developer is not completing the project like he would do, and if you want one exception, everyone's going to want exception. These aren't, it's over a million dollars he has to do, so that's a problem. Across the street, the 440, I was in the council, I voted against it, the MAC there because I thought it was too big, so it was traffic issues. We have a problem there now. I'm hoping someone else can buy the Jersey developer out and come up with something a little more imaginative, but I voted against that, I think, eight or 10 years ago.
Wonderful, thank you. Roy.
Well, these are two of the thorniest problems that we have. I want to, first of all, salute Councilmember Anderson. He was right, people should have listened to him back then, and on my time on the council, I found myself listening to him a lot and agreeing with what he has to say. My solution to the 444 Maple Avenue problem is to give the owner some motivation in the only way that we can, which is to amend our code to require vacant lots like this to be taxed at a higher and higher rate. I'm not sure that's going to fly with our town attorney, but I'm open to anything that will bring some life to that corner. As far as the Vienna Market, Councilmember Springsteen is right. The problem is, they haven't finished the building yet, and they haven't gotten their occupancy permit, and they're in no hurry to do so. And again, I just don't know what we can do as a town council to force them to do so short of litigation.
Sandra.
Thank you. I did, as soon as I got in office, I talked about that building and the many other buildings that are, the many other buildings that have, are empty in the town of Vienna. Those are taxes that we're missing out. We have an economic development director, economic development department, and they need to start doing a lot more to bring influx of businesses here in the town of Vienna. One of the suggestions I had at the beginning of my term, I said, why don't they, we don't invite the owners to come and talk to council? And that was turned down, but I still insist that we should come and have them talk to council directly, so we know exactly what's happening. The Vienna Market, I did walk around there, I talked to the people there, there were a lot of issues with the development, there were concerns by the residents, and the other concern is that they're still suing each other, and they're not able to solve that. But if we bring them, we will be able to see exactly how the town council can help those businesses bring some changes to the area. Thank you.
And Howard, do you have one minute for a rebuttal, if you choose to?
Just for the record, the town attorney has been working with the developer of the old Marco Polo, and it's a real challenging fight, and so we're hoping they can resolve something, encourage him to finish that. So it's not real simple that we just... So it's not real simple that we just, we can do that. We have major legal issues there, and the problem is, they agreed to do over a million dollars worth of work, they haven't done that. So again, I think we need to look at the facts. The 440 is much more challenging. I would be, I grew up in New Jersey originally, and this developer up there is sitting on some vacant underwater properties, and this is kind of a cash cow down here, but if he could sell it to a local developer, you know, hopefully we could get that off. But again, the Virginia code says, as long as you pull the billing permit, you don't have to do anything for two years. And it's, some of it is we're just, our hands are tied. So we've fought things, we have that fence around there, we made them clean up the property. It's frustrating, but I think we're probably making more progress with the Marco Polo than we will the 440 at this point.
Okay, we're now moving to the fourth question, and for the fourth question, we are going to start with Dan, right? And then we'll move down through the table, circling back around, and in the fourth round, Roy, you will have one minute for rebuttal. Okay, fourth question for the council candidates. The town is losing mature trees due to new home construction. To counteract this, planting more street trees is essential. However, currently, town policy allows home builders or new homeowners to object to the town planting a tree in the town right of way between the sidewalk and the curb, resulting in many empty tree lawns. Do you support changing town policy? The change would be to allow the town to plant a tree in the tree lawn in front of a new home, rather than allowing the builder or new homeowner to object to a tree. This would allow the town to plant trees in those new tree lawns that have the space for a tree.
Jessica. Yeah, I guess I would get hit with that cold, but yeah, I think I would support changing town policy and allowing for the tree. I think it's important that we get the trees back, and I think sort of the miscalculation on a lot of people's part is, you know, that first 12 feet is sort of town property, and I think it's probably beneficial use for the town in general. I would do that. And just in the trees in general, maybe we'll have another question on this, but I did want to touch base on this. We had some folks come before us last night at the BZA meeting, and I didn't realize how many foundations are out there that actually provide free local indigenous plants and trees, that they're willing to just come and plant if they get called upon. So I think if we can engage them for some of the other places that have been denuded, the trail is one of the areas I'm thinking of, so, yeah.
Doug.
So the process is, is that the town needs to send a registered letter to that homeowner to say, do you want a tree or not? You have to talk to the town attorney about that process, but that homeowner can just say no. Now, as far as wanting to have trees, yes, I want to have trees out there, but you want to have somebody who's in sync, who's going to maintain that tree. And if somebody gets a tree that's planted out in front of their house and they don't want it, I bet in two weeks, two weeks, it's not going to be there. So I totally support the effort that the town has had. I've mentioned in my introduction or one of the comments about driving down Air Hill and seeing some beautiful trees that have been planted. I do think a commitment has to be made, not just by the town to stop by with a water truck, but you want to have that homeowner onboard to water that tree, especially during a summer like we just had.
Chuck.
I would support that proposal, and here's the reason why. We did a tree canopy assessment a couple of years ago, and we discovered that, like in the last 20 years, we had lost 13% of our tree canopy in town. And essentially, there are only a limited number of spaces on town property where we can replant, and by law in Virginia, we are limited in how much we can require of homeowners. If we want to rebuild our canopy to something like 40%, which is what it used to be, then we have to basically start looking for ways to get trees replanted, not just in town parks, but importantly, on streets where they provide shade. And one tree in a residential neighborhood can do a lot more good than a single tree in a park. So I would seriously consider that, and basically, you're not putting anybody out. It's at the time that a new house is being put up, and it's on town property, so yes, I would consider it.
Howard.
Yeah, thank you. I would support that, but I will also go through our tree commission, because they're coming up with some good recommendations. I do have one concern, is that, you know, I just planted five trees in my backyard, another one, and so, you know, I have pretty good coverage of my property, but between the street and the sidewalk, you want a wide enough space. I wouldn't want to put a tree there that would just, you know, die. I wouldn't want to do, there's a good border. If not, then go back, see if you can go back further. But I do agree, we've lost a lot of tree canopy, and I think, I feel very pleased that we have the tree commission now, and they're coming up with some good recommendations.
Roy.
I think I know who wrote that question. Brian Land, did you write that question? Well, don't have to answer, but it sounds a lot like an email that he sent to members of the council about a month ago. And I think his approach is innovative, and I think we need to hear from all sides about that. I mean, there's two sides to the question. Number one, the town needs to take advantage of the town right of way to be able to plant appropriate trees. On the other hand, the homeowner has to be assured that whatever is going to be put there is not going to load them with a bunch of leaves in the fall, is not going to require a lot of care on their part. So there are two sides to the question. I'm encouraged by it. I think Brian, he comes up with great ideas for us on a regular basis. I'm ready for there to be a robust conversation about this. I'm not sure exactly what we'll have, and I think we'll also, as Howard mentioned, bring in the tree advisory committee. We're going to take advantage of what we've got, and we'll do it in a way that encourages all sides to be heard.
Sandra.
Thank you. This is a very sensitive topic, because I love trees. I have a bunch of trees, but I also cut those trees down because they were very dangerous for my home. A tree fell, a branch fell, and it crashed on my car, and it's very dangerous. And I believe in homeownership, and you buy your home, you own your land, and you have the right to be able to do what you wish with that property. And I don't think the town or the government should come into your property and tell you what to do. I believe that there should be more advertisement and more encouragement for people to plant trees that they like. I like flowering trees, and I love to see them bloom during the spring, and I love the changes of the leaves during the fall. But having to encourage a government to force you to plant something that you don't want is wrong in the United States of America. Not only that, because there's legislation that is coming up and is being proposed that is going to force, the government to force you not to cut your trees. So we have to be very careful where we go with that. Thank you very much.
Jessica.
As other candidates here have mentioned, I share the value of trees. My husband and I have planted three new trees in our lot, and we have a lot of mature trees on our lot as well. It's something that matters a lot to me. That said, I think we could come back to this topic of thinking about what the town could do, even if residents have concerns, but I think we could make a lot of progress if we go to the residents who would like a tree. Our resources are limited, so if we go through town and use all of our resources and go just to the homes that are interested in having the trees as described, then we may use all of our resources that way, and it would further reinforce the eclectic look that we have in Vienna of, it doesn't all look uniform, it's, which I really like. So I think that's a really nice way to just do the most we can with our resources to get as far as we can among those residents who are interested in having a tree added to their property.
Roy, back to you. One minute for rebuttal if you choose to.
Thanks. I think that there's only one issue I wanted to correct Councilmember Allen about. This is the town's property we're talking about, the town right of way. So the town is not forcing a homeowner under any stretch of the imagination to plant or maintain a tree on their property. On the other hand, we have an obligation as a town not to be overbearing, not to overdo it with our, with what our property is. But I just want to tell you, there is a huge need. I mean, my wife Sharon is here in the audience as well. When we used to go down Moore Avenue on walks, we'd, on sunny days, we'd have the shade of a tree in every lot. Now, Moore Avenue is almost a tree desert because there have been so many tear downs and beautiful new homes being done, but there's been no real effort to plant trees along the sidewalk. We need to have them, and we're not alone. So there's a huge need there that's been identified. I want to see us addressing that need in a way that retains the rights of the homeowners.
Thank you. The question that was brought up and other council members have expressed was putting trees.
Roy, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think we've already run through everyone? Yep. Okay, no, all good. Appreciate the passion. All right, we're moving on to the fifth of 10 questions, and in, for the fifth question, we are going to start with Doug, right? Yep, we'll work our way back around, and on the fifth round here, we're going to have Sandra give a rebuttal. Yep. Okay. Fifth question for us. Where does each candidate stand on the future use of the annex property?
Thank you, Chuck. The loaded question of the night. So the annex property, and I've been to the meeting where they discussed the fitness complex. They included an aquatic part of the, you know, including a pool, and I believe in fitness. I do think it's important that the community gets out of their houses, socializes, intermingles, and does things like that. This particular property, when I saw the plan and it dealt with the pool, I did go, was concerned. The reason being, the lap pool, in my opinion, after doing an official test with a lot of my swimmer friends, was too small. And so my recommendation to the town would be, if they want to move ahead with that plan, is to actually increase the lap lanes in the pool. The future of the pool and the property is something to be determined, though.
One minute. Okay. Chuck.
Okay, so I've thought long and hard about this, the $30.5 million-plus question. I'm not entirely sure what I would do, but I'm pretty sure that I would not build an aquatic center there. And I'm out on this publicly. I have written a blog. You can go to chuckforvienna.com and read it. It's entitled, "You Can't Always Get What You Want." And the reason I do not support it is I don't think the site is big enough to put in place an economically efficient pool. It uses all our capital funds available for new projects, for new capital projects for the next 10 to 20 years. It's a large amount of our treasure to benefit a relatively small part of our population, and for that reason, I don't support it. And I don't think we can afford it. Fairfax County basically has one aquatics facility for every 100,000 residents. We're trying to do it, one for 16,500, at a tax rate that's one-tenth of theirs. It just doesn't make sense to me.
Howard.
You asked me about the pool, okay. There's a bigger question. What do we do with this three-acre property? I think the pool, I think it's a good idea, but my concern is, how do we fund it? With the federal shutdown, I kind of want to sit tight for a few months and see what we're getting into funding, how the capital campaign, you know, if we go from four lanes to six, eight lanes, we're limited on the footprint. So I kind of like, you know, we're looking at the capital budget, we have the meals tax, we have $21 million worth of park projects out there. Again, I want to run the numbers and figure out, you know, can we afford it with the numbers we have? Are the costs going up? I retired from Fairfax County, they hired me back, because I'm one of the underground tank experts. When I started putting tanks in 31 years ago, every tank in the county was leaking. We have double-wall tanks. They're helping me replace these tanks now that are 35 years, and the price of tanks the past three or four years have doubled in price with steel. So again, I think we had the Village Green, that worked out well. Again, I want, at the end of the day, we need to see what a good number is.
One minute.
Right, yeah. Thank you.
Roy.
This project would be the most expensive, most ambitious project we've ever undertaken in the town of Vienna. I'm not prepared to do it until I see a ground swell for it, but I'm part of the people that want to have that ground swell happen. I believe that what we ought to have on that property is a significant asset to the community. It's more than just an auxiliary parking lot for Waters Field Events. This is our opportunity to take a prime piece of downtown real estate right next door here and make something that we and our children and our grandchildren will be proud of. And I want to salute Ray Brill. He's given us a blueprint. He's done a lot of legwork, and he's shown us how we can make an aquatics and fitness center work financially. I'm in favor of it if we can make it work.
One minute, thank you. Sandra.
If you have visited my webpage, you would know that I spoke on this matter a lot because it's taxes. It's, I ask you to, if the candidates are committed to voting this, you ask them not to raise the taxes for 10 years or more, because what their plan, the plan is of council to buy another property, which will have, the taxpayers would have to fund for people, and the cost that comes with maintenance. In my two years, at the beginning, I was excited to support this project. However, as I went in and got to know the many facilities in the town, and I saw the decline and the negligence of our waterways, our bridges, I started thinking back, why have they not addressed this? Those buildings need to be addressed, and that list, the community center parking lot is deteriorating. A lot of things have been neglected, and we can't prioritize this type of investment at this time with this economic condition. Thank you.
Jessica.
Thank you. We've been gathering input from the community in a variety of ways on what to do in that property, and I agree that it is, the location is such an important place in our town where we could have something really vibrant for everyone in the community to enjoy. At the different public comment sessions that were held, when I went, I didn't personally choose the pool option to see what would fit on the lot. I liked the idea of having something that would be outdoor, have space that is part of the feel of that part of town. I think that type of vision could work with a fitness and aquatics facility if we pursue that through the design. What we've done so far is to just ask, to ask the community, is this something that would interest you? And we did hear concerns, but we also heard a lot of support and enthusiasm and interest. And so with that in mind, I'm interested in continuing to see if it is feasible. If it's not, we'll have to pursue another option, like we would with other projects in the town. Thank you.
Last response, Dan.
Yeah, I kind of side with Howard on this. I think, I do believe the property should be developed at some point, but I think we kind of, at this point, be my recommendation, we kind of keep our powder dry for later. There's a lot that's going to happen in the next couple of years, and I still think that we can go down the path of securing the money. Obviously, the mail tax has happened. We can start going down the bond route, we can go down some initial design concepts, but then I think we kind of need to figure out the actual timing of it and figure out the actual finances to see if it does work in the long term, because it will be a big part of the budget that comes out of the CIP.
All right. Sandra, you have one minute for rebuttal if you choose to.
Let me just add, we did hear from you guys, the town is divided, and I know there's the need for the elderly. That's where I was advocating when I came in, having a senior center, and also making sure that the elderly had a place close by that they can go, and the children as well. But as I, like I said, as I went by and got to know the town more, I felt that it was not the right time, and the property that we are looking into will cost a lot. We have to add more people, means retirement, a lot of expenses will come along, and based on what I've seen, the town is not ready for this. There has to be major changes in the maintenance, the director, there has to be a director for public works, a director for the rec center, because it is not working the way it is right now. And I've spoken with the town manager and expressed my concerns. I'm always here talking about the needs of the town. talking about the needs of the town, and this is not something at this time that needs to happen. Thank you.
All right. For our sixth of 10 questions, we are going to start with Chuck. We're going to work our way back through the table. And then for this round, Jessica will have one minute for a rebuttal at the end. Sixth question to the candidates. What would you support for the future use of the former Beulah Road leaf collection site? Chuck?
Boy, am I surprised that question came up. Right now, the Beulah Road facility is essentially pretty much wilderness, although part of it's being used by the town for its leaf collection. And it's vital that we keep that for the time being, because we tried to do sort of direct transfer from essentially your front lawn to the place out somewhere in Virginia where the leaves get recycled, and it just wasn't economically feasible. We need a staging area, and it provides that service. I have been leaning more and more towards keeping it a wilderness-type area, because, again, it does provide a lot of trees. And in the recent master plan, that was an area of deficit of just walking in wilderness areas. So I am kind of leaning in that direction right now.
Howard?
Okay. Paraphrasing that town attorney, it's like frozen meat in a freezer. Good asset. Last door passway, so walk back there. So we use it to transit leaves, but I'm kind of inclined, yes, you can put defferredified housing there, you can put a new pool there. I'm just, right now, inclined to leave it as park, because it's part of Northside Park. It's just a nice area back there. And so I'm not, I don't really feel any rush to do anything, but maybe just leave it wild right now.
Roy?
Well, I'm with my two colleagues this far. I'm not in favor of developing it or selling it. I'm not in favor of new residential development on that parcel. I am in favor of trying to move the leaf mulching, the leaf collection activity to somewhere else. I'm sure that there's got to be a place where it can go. The problem that I have with that site now is that it's so inhospitable to anybody walking through, because so much of it is old concrete or asphalt, and it's, there's invasive vines all over the place. It's just not a conducive place even to say as a wilderness. It needs to be fixed up. It needs to be cared for. And that means we have to put it in our budget. But I'm willing to do that because the people that live in northeast Vienna, all of us, we deserve a wilderness place, a place that isn't a developed park, to just go and do something in the wild.
Sandra?
Wow. Out of everything that I've walked and I've visited, Beulah is not one that I've visited. So with the many, as I'm learning about the many properties that the town owns, and I'm very compelled to say that we need to stop buying. Our government should not be buying more property, developing more property. I think we can do a private, incentivize private investors to come and buy property, not the town to buy property. So with Beulah and the leaf mulching, I know my neighbor used to collect the mulch that the town delivered. She was very sad and upset when that was done. It was a good way of recycling. It was a good way of helping the community with financing, because you have to pay a lot to have mulch. You have to have trucks deliver. And when you're an elderly or with an older person, you can't do that alone. You have to hire somebody to help you. So I'm very sad that that project ended here. And I wish it wouldn't, but I'll make an effort and go and visit Beulah and be more informed. Thank you.
Jessica?
I agree that it should be kept as it is for now. Part of what we have the opportunity to look at is the parks' master plan, which was just an assessment of all of the properties in town and where there are unmet needs. So I think we should carefully review that and consider input from the residents in that area, and also from the broader Vienna community to consider what to do there.
Dan?
Yeah, I would also agree that it be left undeveloped, but I would agree with Roy that I think it needs to be managed and kind of straightened up, if you will. And it doesn't seem to me that that would be so costly. And there are some items, just going through the CIP, that maybe that could even be switched out for. So that's what I would do with it.
Doug?
So the Beulah Road property is pretty spectacular. It's either six or eight acres. And I've walked in there and stood in there. It's very peaceful and quiet when you don't have the mulching equipment going. They did dump in a lot of concrete in that area, so it is a bit of a mess. And it's going to be a little bit of a major cleanup for the town to ever restore that property. But I think it's a worthwhile investment to get in there and jackhammer out a lot of that concrete, and then come in and plant more of an urban forest. I mean, we've got this jewel right in town of an older-growth forest. You drive down Beulah Road and you see the trees hanging over. Do it. There's actually a maple which is turning right now. It's pretty spectacular. So my thought is to maintain it as a property, but I would love to see the Parks and Rec and the Arborists come in and come up with a plan to plant it and make it more of a park.
One minute. Wonderful. Okay, Jessica. One minute for rebuttal, if you choose to.
I don't have a rebuttal. Thank you. I appreciate the discussion.
Wonderful. Okay. Very good. Moving on to the seventh question. For the seventh question, we're going to start with Howard. Again, rotation through. And on the seventh question, Dan, you'll have an opportunity for one-minute rebuttal at the end. Seventh question for us here. What are your top priorities protecting the environment and promoting sustainability in the town of Vienna?
My first is that we are moving the mulch, composting, from a three-month operation at the farmer's market to year-round, which will be pretty good. Secondly, encouraging some recycling, and also continue to improve our tree canopy through the Tree Advisory Committee. And then we are trying to find some electric vehicles or low-energy vehicles, but my two focuses probably on composting and the tree canopy.
Wonderful. Okay, Roy?
Well, I think first, we have to reduce our deer population. They are ravaging our vegetation all over town, and there's just too many of them. I am hopeful that the operation that's going to be going on later this month and into next month in the Northside Park and also in the Beulah Road property, that's actually conducted by Fairfax County police sharpshooters who actually cull the deer, should be helpful. We'll see how many are actually culled that way, and we'll be able to take appropriate steps from then on. In addition, we have so many invasive vines and other vegetation here. I look around and I see the faces of people that, including one of our own, who spend hours hacking them back. And we need to do all we can on the council to encourage
One minute.
that and to get some of our people behind it as well.
Sandra?
I was thinking about this hard. And I do support composting, but I don't support the town putting a composting place, because it's not well-managed. It can bring rats. I've seen how people came and brought their buckets at the farmer's market and dumped it in a bucket, and there's a lot of spillage. That changed recently, because I wrote to the town manager about my concerns about that. I support that the composting should be done at the home. I would like to incentivize our community in a greater incentive, in a greater, wider audience to have everybody do composting. Maybe the funds that are currently being used can be used to help the residents provide that service, that a truck comes and picks it up from your home, rather than using the mill area for another area to drop off recyclables. I like the idea of trees and having people
One minute.
come to the town and get trees from them. Thank you.
This is an area I care a lot about. I was very strongly in favor of putting a permanent composting location available in town and to continue to have that available at our farmer's market. I think it's a really wonderful way for us to be able to take action as a community to support sustainability in the town. And there are many local examples that are available for composting to be managed well. And I would expect that when we start that in the town, that we would meet that highest standard. I also support voluntary action to plant more trees in town. We already have wonderful efforts that are promoted by our Conservation and Sustainability Commission for people to get native trees to plant in their yard. And I've also been really pleased to join with members of our community who go and remove invasive species in our parks, which I think is also a really important priority. I've also heard creative ideas about what we can do in our really great festivals in town that we have, what we can do to make those more sustainable as well. So can we do more to have fill stations so that there are fewer water bottles and other ways
One minute.
that we can better manage those events to support sustainability.
Dan?
Yeah, I think I'm going to end up echoing a lot of that. So yeah, my folks used to live out in Lovitzville and had a pretty robust composting program out there. And I've seen it work, and it's very effective. And I would be in favor of doing that on a larger scale here. I think probably just promoting education in general about sustainability and all the things that that involves. There's some larger corporations that have kind of taken that on in a large-scale way, from drinking in those vessels as opposed to these and all that kind of stuff, right? It all makes a difference. Some corporations have started going paperless. There's zero paper if you go into their offices, that kind of thing. So I think we could kind of spread that around. I do agree with the deer thing. I believe that that's obviously a sticky wicket. I get that. I enjoy deer as much as anybody. They're in my yard all the time. I don't have a lot for them to eat on, but I will say that the deer in the population they currently are in, they destroy the local environment. They really do. They infect a lot of other animals, so it's not just that we have a lot of deer. The problem, anyway, I'm sorry.
Thank you. All right, Doug?
Well, one thing that Sandra mentioned, which I think is a good idea regarding the compost, is to come up with a plan that the town can implement, which would be a, the residents would volunteer and be a part of, they would have. And being at the Green Expo, I don't know if any of you went to that, but there were two, if not three, companies that are local, which actually do compost pickup at houses. And I think a great pilot program would be to have the town creatively come up with this project, get volunteers from residents, be able to split that cost, and see how that goes over, say, a year pilot program, to see whether or not it's something that the residents are willing to participate in, in the future. Thanks.
Chuck?
I want to take a few of my precious seconds to acknowledge two people in this room. One is a former council member and my friend Steve Potter, who fought with me to get a piece of new tree preservation ordinance written by Mr. Brian Land and largely passed. And I think it was a really big accomplishment of the last council. And one of the things that that legislation did was to establish a tree advocacy committee. And one of their first tasks is to come up with a goal for what our canopy should be, what percentage should it be. It used to be 40 to 50, and it's down to about 30%. It's going to probably require both public and private action to get back to that, but we need to know exactly what it's going, what the goal should be and what it's going to take to get there.
Wonderful. And Dan, one minute back to you for rebuttal, if you choose.
So picking up where I was. Anyway, just to finish off the deer thing real quick. It is an issue that I care a little bit, quite a bit about. It's just when you have a species that's used to populating at a quick rate because they have predators, and you take those predators away, it kind of gets out of hand. And that's, drives up limes. My son had Lyme's disease. It creates a lot of issues that I don't think everybody's aware of when they're just looking at the deer. So nothing against the deer. It's just that when you have that many of them, they create a problem. They monopolize and kind of throw off the whole food chain.
Wonderful. Moving on to question eight of 10. We're going to start with Roy, work our way down the table, and then Doug, you'll have one minute for a rebuttal. Our eighth question. Riffs, furloughs, and the federal government shutdown must be hurting a lot of people in town, federal employees and their families and their merchants who sell to them. Have you proposed or supported any measures to help these people? What could the town do? Extend deadlines for payment of water bills and real estate taxes, sponsor job fairs or et cetera, increase support of the churches and other nonprofits in town who are serving these people? Roy, we'll start with you.
Well, I think there's probably not a single person in this room that hasn't been touched, either directly or indirectly, by all of the upsetting shenanigans going on emanating from downtown DC. What we can do for those people, as a town, frankly, is not going to be very satisfactory to anybody. I'm encouraged by the fact that the county has, and also Congressman Walkinshaw, has a number of really good resources on their websites. I just don't think we have the ability to scale up, to be a part of that, except to say that if somebody has an issue like that, please contact the town as a first resort. But to realize that there are programs that are done by the county and also by our representative that can be much more effective than
One minute.
what we could do.
Thank you, Sandra.
Yeah. It is hard for a small town with a small budget to do things I wish we would be able to do. My idea when I came in is that, because there were a lot of young professionals that were having difficulty finding a job, to have somebody in the town assist them. And just the concerns that I was having with my own children, having difficulty finding a job, now they're living with me, and they have the uncertainty where they're going to go and what's going to happen. This town offers very little in that regard. I would love to offer, if elected, opportunity to have somebody work with Fairfax County. We need to start using Fairfax County as a partner, because you guys pay taxes to Fairfax County. And we should be able to offer that opportunity here in the town of Vienna, to have somebody come and help find jobs for people and connect them. And that is what's lacking. Right now, technology has been an obstruction rather than a useful tool.
One minute.
And I think if we assist them in one-to-one, I think more people will be able to find jobs. Thank you.
Jessica?
Thank you for this important question. I do think what we're able to do in the town and as members of town council is to listen and make connections effectively with our organizations in the community. You mentioned local nonprofit organizations, churches. There are activities happening right now in support of people who are experiencing employment uncertainty. And I think being able to make connections and listen to what those efforts are and how we can help in the town is really important. I'll give a brief example of something I've done with the American Legion here in Vienna to support our veterans. There are things that we can do, like their recent Be the One initiative, to reach out to people in the community, to be there for each other, and also to just demonstrate appreciation for our veterans. Those are efforts that I've worked on with the American Legion. And they weren't town-funded initiatives. They were about showing up and about listening and supporting the community organizations that we have doing such important work. So I think that's where we could focus. And also, depending on how
One minute.
this goes into the future, thinking about if we need to think about extensions on bills in the town or other things that could be helpful to our residents.
Thank you. Dan?
Yeah, I agree with Roy. I'm not sure how fast we could scale things up. But one thing I just thought of is, we do have an excellent town website. And sort of piggybacking on what Jessica just said, I think that would be a good warehouse for getting local agencies and things together, and maybe just having one solid page that just is allowing people to, one focal point to turn to, that they could look at there and then figure out from there where they could branch off to other resources. Obviously, we could look into basically what the county's done, where they've extended personal property tax for a little while. But again, that's going to take probably by the time we get that into action. But again, that's gonna take probably by the time we get that into action, where this may have already been resolved. So but I do think the website thing could be put up, stood up very quickly and would be very helpful.
Thank you, Doug.
Well, I think the situation is grim for a lot of people. So even though it may be resolved at the federal level, a lot of those jobs are not coming back. And that's the reality at this point. Having seen other reduction in force situations in the '90s, I know that actually create a lot of innovation and had people who certainly thought more creatively on how they could take their talents out there and start businesses. What I think our Business Development Office could do is certainly come up with an organized way to get those people together and maybe have people come in and give them a little guidance on how to create a business and/or meet other people that they can partner up with.
Thank you. Chuck?
This is a tough issue for us because as a town government within a larger county, obviously, we split government services. And the bulk of social services and economic development, all of social services and the bulk of economic development falls on the county. So we really have to rely on them. But the one thing we can do for all of our citizens is to acknowledge that we are going to be in for harder times. We have been very lucky in the past 15 to 20 years in that infill redevelopment in town has added 1% to our total tax receipts per year, even if the assessments stayed the same, which they obviously haven't. But by going from a $700,000 property to a $2.2 or $2.8 million property, we've had this built-in, essentially additional source of revenue. And that ain't gonna last forever, especially given what's going on. So what I've been trying to do is to get a much better grasp on the budgeting processes at the earlier so we can be in a position to tighten our belts.
Thank you. Howard?
My wife is a retired federal employee, and through her I hear of a lot of the horror stories that's happening nationally. It's tragic. And, you know, it is -- I call a train wreck what's happening in Washington right now. You know, I was a Peace Corps volunteer, and they eliminate AID. People are dying because they eliminate ID. So I do think, you know, we don't -- we're not geared for a lot of social services in the town, we're more the county. But I do think we should, you know, try to address where people can go to. We have a new economic development group that's very good. And again, I think rolling back some, the collection of some of the bills, the taxes, I think we can start looking at that. But that, you know, things might right themselves before we do that. I know the county has cut back or delayed the payment of the personal properties tax, I think by a month or two. But it is -- what's happening is very tragic.
Thank you. Okay, the last of the responses, and then Doug, if you have one minute for rebuttal if you choose to.
Yeah, well, I want to rebut the whole thing. But, you know, I didn't mean to make you laugh. I do think this is a tough situation. I think in a democracy and an economy like we have, that people get creative when times get tough. And I know that this area has some of the most intelligent people that I've ever met in my life. I think we have opportunities that aren't just local, but they're international. And it will actually get done, I think, two years from now, we'll look back in the rearview mirror and went, wow, a lot of innovation happened during this one period. Thanks.
Okay. All right, for our ninth of 10 questions, we're gonna start with Sandra, work our way back around the table. We'll finish with Roy, and then Chuck, you'll have one minute for debate at the end. Debate of rebuttal. Our ninth question, "What would you do to increase affordable or workforce housing in Vienna?" Sandra?
What would I do? What I've been trying to do is pretty much have two more council members elected so they can really think thoroughly that the town needs affordable housing. Young professionals are not finding jobs here. The elderly are moving away, and pretty much you have to move far away. I migrated from Bolivia, and I came here, got married, didn't want to move again. And I can't imagine moving in my old age to a different place, a new place. So what would I do? I've been trying to do is bring affordable housing, talk to developers. I've suggested in my prior first year that we should work with our builders. We have a lot of builders here that are building multimillion-dollar homes, and I think we can, they can afford to help the town build some affordable homes here. The town has properties that could be used for affordable homes, but we need four council members to support this effort. And if you don't have that, no affordable homes will be here in the town of Vienna. So I know that Fairfax County is building some affordable homes for young professionals in Tysons, but we should do something for our young professionals here that are graduating. Many of you probably are faced with your young children living with you or your young adults coming back because they can't afford here. They're moving away to deep in Virginia.
One minute.
Because that's the only place they can afford. Where are they gonna work? Thank you.
Thank you. Jessica?
I think that looking at this issue of diverse housing options, including affordable housing, is an important area for us to look at as we look to the future vision of the town. There's work underway in the Planning Commission on the Comprehensive Plan, which is the way that we set out the vision for the future in Vienna. And I think we do have some opportunities to consider where we could have more housing options. We know that the reality of the market is that even when there are different types of housing built here in Vienna, they tend to sell for a very high price. And so we have to be thoughtful about where we can create more options that would engage the market, that would meet people where they are, and create more opportunities for diverse housing options in the town, including those that would be at a more affordable price point.
Thank you. Dan?
Yeah, I think it needs to be solved, in my mind, sort of through zoning. The fact is that the land is the driver, right? So the land here is super expensive. That's why your property taxes go up every year. The land gets more and more valuable, right? So the only way to solve that is through density, right? You're either gonna build units higher, or you're gonna have more on the property. I mean, that's the only way to bring that price point down. But to Jessica's point, it is an expensive area, so even when you bring it down, it's still fairly expensive. So I think you're gonna have to sort of have some sort of offset of, if a larger development gets approved, that then a certain segment is set aside for affordable housing. It's done kind of throughout the country. And I also think that you could do certain tax incentives and some other things to kind of make that, incentivize that for developers. And then there might be some other loan programs that we could start to involve with Navy, Federal Credit Union, and that kind of thing. So those would be kind of the avenues that I would look to bring that to be.
Doug?
Well, creating new affordable housing is gonna be difficult since we have such a limited postage stamp here in the town of Vienna. You know, I look at places like 200 Locust Street, and you've probably driven by that building a million times, which is a condo right on the corner of Locust and Park. It's right near Whole Foods. Now, those three-bedroom rentals are now at $2,400 a month, and I was surprised recently to see that they're now selling over $400,000 for a three-bedroom. It's a great location, and that's one of the things that you always have to look at on affordable housing, that you can't put it too far away from public transportation. So, you know, I like to look at what we already have in the market, like Park Terrace is another good one to take a look at, and understand that we have some housing already in place. The demand just far exceeds that housing that we currently have, especially those two locations.
Thank you. Chuck?
This is one of the issues that sort of keeps me awake at night because I think it's extremely important. What makes Vienna Vienna is that it's been a great place for young families to come to live, work, and play, but we're unwittingly pricing ourselves out of the market. As an economist, the answer is kind of simple: increased supply. How do you do that in an area that's almost exclusively zoned, single-family residential? Well, what I've tried to do on council is I have tried, in every single instance where there is essentially a project proposed, to look at it very carefully and see if it has merit, including at 901 Folon. That is commercial, zone commercial. It's been sitting empty for 10 years. It's right next to the bike path. It makes sense to put townhouses there, in my opinion. The market has spoken, it's not going to go back to residential, I mean, go back to commercial. So that's my approach. Look at every single possibility.
One minute. Thank you. Howard?
Thank you. The first line, housing is very challenged, and I agree that the property here in town, we can't force the property prices down. So the best thing is to, we get to look at our limited areas where we put some diversified housing in. Chuck makes very good comment, 901 Folon. But we're primarily town residential houses, and people do not want their residential neighborhoods broken up. So we have to look at there. I want to remind folks that Cedar Lane, we have a lot of apartments there. We do have a number of multifamily houses around town, but we are greatly limited where we can put them. So again, we should look some zoning changes and look for areas that we can do that. But at the end of the day, we can't compete with Fairfax County, and they're gonna be having a challenging time to put some affordable housing in.
Thank you. Roy?
Well, once again, this is me listening to Councilmember Anderson. I agree with him about 901 Folon Lane. You ought to go up there sometime. You won't be able to see much except a vacant office building. And then there's a, you can go on Google Maps and see the rest of it is just a parking lot. It's a number of acres right on the WOD trail. There could be dozens of townhouses and low-rise condos and apartment buildings there. The next town council will have the duty of approving the new comprehensive zoning ordinance. If we can make that, if we can get a majority on the council to make that residential, then that means with whoever wants to develop that area, they have to come to us, and we can drive a hard bargain with them about how many of the units have to be affordable. It's food for thought.
Wonderful. Okay. Thank you. And rebuttal, Chuck, you've got one minute if you choose to.
Not a whole lot to rebut. I think we all see the difficulties, given our current zoning structure and our current culture, frankly. But we do, again, I stress, we need to take a look at every possible option, including multifamily and transitional areas. We have allowed for a modest height increase along Maple Avenue. No projects have yet come in, although there's one that's under consideration. These are the kind of things that we can do. Keep in mind that we are basically part of a much larger community, and there are affordable options just outside the town limits where there's much more land. We'll never be able to achieve that kind of density, and I don't think most people in the town would want it anyway.
Okay, thank you. All right, so for our final question of the night, we're gonna start with Jessica, work our way down through the table. We'll end with Sandra, and then Howard, you'll have one minute for rebuttal if you choose to. Final question, "What is the town's position on the potential Tyson's Casino?"
The town council is unanimously opposed to the Tyson's Casino. We have been very active in Richmond. I know Councilmember Anderson, our mayor, Mayor Colbert, residents in the town have been very active in opposition to the Tyson's Casino. Each time that it is unsuccessful, we are pleased, kind of take a sigh of relief for that moment. We have to be diligent in continuing to oppose it. It is going to continue to come up, so we have to continue to be organized. We anticipate that there will be a very well-organized effort again when the state legislature is back in session in Richmond, and a lot of that groundwork has already been underway. So again, we're unanimously opposed. I am personally opposed. I'm very concerned about the prospect of having a casino in Tyson's Corner. I don't think that it would have the economic benefits that those are advocating for, say it will, either.
Thank you. Dan?
All right, I think this is probably gonna be the same all the way through here. Yeah, I'm in lockstep on that, I think, totally opposed to the casino. I'm glad that Chuck is so involved, and I think the key is what he's already doing is try to get involved with this gaming commission that's getting stood up and be an active voice on that and try to, because I think you need to kind of get it early because, yeah, it's not gonna go away as far as the efforts to try to get a casino here. So we definitely need to remain vigilant.
Doug?
As a longtime resident, you know, I really do appreciate what the mayor and the town council did as far as taking this fight right down to Richmond and putting your stake in the ground and saying, heck, no. Of course, Chuck said something else, but anyway. As a resident, I really do appreciate what they did, and I know that right now, what Jessica said, they're arming for, to bring this up next year, January 1st. I'm sure we're gonna see this introduced down in Richmond.
Thank you. Chuck?
I also want to make a shout-out to the mayor because she has been brave in fighting this, is one of the highest elected officials who will stand up and say no, to say no to greed and to power. And for that reason, we've got a target on our back. Just this afternoon, I was in a conference call to prepare for my testimony on Monday, and I was cautioned by certain people that we were being too aggressive and we need to throttle back. And I thought, why are you saying this? Because there were Comstock lobbyists whispering in the ears of a certain representatives that Vienna is just too far out in front of this. I say, we continue this fight. I see that it is an existential threat, casino, and there's no way we should just sit down and let it happen.
Howard?
I too am opposed to casino, and Chuck's been very much involved, which has kind of shocked me, maybe, which means shocking me, the amount of money that's been thrown away, ran by the casino folks to basically buy votes, the delegates and the state senators. And again, I applaud the mayor's opposition to this, but it's just crazy. It's just, you don't think this happens in America, but it does.
Thank you. Roy?
Well, the fight really is in Richmond now. Our town council took a vote, and unanimously, we just said, no, a casino in Tyson's is just too close for comfort. It's not appropriate for the land that it's proposed for. It would have an extremely negative impact on businesses and residents in this town. Build it if you must, but some other place. But the problem is that Comstock has millions of dollars, and under our lax political contribution statutes in Virginia, they can give any amount of money to any number of political, of elected officials, and that's what they're doing. So this session is going to be a session when we really find out who our friends are. I want to give all my praise to the members of our town council and our mayor who are gonna be going down there and fighting this. We're gonna do the best we can. We'll just have to see what happens down in Richmond.
Thank you. Sandra?
Yes, we are together in this, and there are no casinos. I am against the addictive nature of casinos. I wish I could speak more on that, but we are united. I also don't like to have any type of gambling machines in our gas stations, which I spoke about, and I brought it to the attention of the attorney, because that's another way of getting our young adults addicted to that. I also think that with, there are other places that have, wanting the casinos, and they want to have them for their revenue. It's great for them, but it's not great for our town, which we are a family-oriented community. We care for our children, and we care for our well-being. So with casinos coming, if they come, if they force us, we need to be ahead of the game and make sure that we put restrictions. We start thinking, what if this happens? Then we need to start saying, this is not for us.
Wonderful. Okay. Thank you. And then Howard, if you choose, one minute for rebuttal response.
Thank you. As I said, I'm opposed to casinos. But I was actually shocked when I was down in Richmond last year, and so the meeting was... last year, and so the meetings, is there are areas of the state that want it, and that's fine for some incumbrating, but Fairfax did not ask for it. We did not ask for it, and that's kind of gallsby. You know, here, you know, we understand there are casinos in the state, and people, you know, wanted them, and they put you. I think Richmond, they tried several times, they voted it down. But here, they just say, "We're going to put it there," and basically, there's been no local, you know, choice. And I just want, I think she's left, Holly, our local delegate, I think she's definitely very much opposed to the casino. But again, the battle is going to be fought in Richmond, not here in the town council.
Wonderful. Thank you. That concludes all the questions. We do have closing statements. Two minutes for each candidate. We're going to start down here with Roy, and then we're going to work ourselves down, and the mayor is going to end with two minutes for a closing statement. Thank you. Roy?
You're entitled to ask yourself, which of these candidates loves this little town as much as I do? You're entitled. I urge you to do that. When Sharon and I came to visit this town back in 1979, we fell in love with the little house. We didn't realize it at the time, but we were pioneers in the tiny house movement. We raised our son here. Our grandson loves to come to Nana and Granda's house. We love this little town. I want to be part of the team that keeps our little town the wonderful place that it is. I want to be on the team that redoes the comprehensive zoning code, that takes the fight for no casino down to Richmond. I want to fight for all of these, because I have 45 years in this town. I have a year and a half on the council. I've learned a heck of a lot that I want to take down there to use for your benefit. I want this town, after another two years of me being on the council, of me being part of that team, to be what it is now, which is a nice little town, a safe place, a well-run place, a place to raise a family, a place to retire, a place to make a living, and a welcoming place for those who come to our town for business or for pleasure. But the onus is on you now. Your job is to pick six of these seven candidates. If you pick well, you'll have a team that will be cohesive, and talented, and motivated to take the extra time and effort that it takes to make this town run. I wish you well. I hope you make the right choice.
Thank you. Sandra?
Well, you know why I'm here. I'm here to speak on behalf of those that have not been heard. I have walked the town everywhere. I've spoken with the businesses. They share their ideas, their concerns, and I have brought it up to the attention of the town government, as well as the council members. I have been, I've asked you to, ask your council members to be responsible with the funds that you're paying, because it's important that they see you as a human being, not as a piggy bank. I don't want taxes on myself. I would not vote for a tax that would be impacting my way of life, impacting the way I live. Right now, we are paying Fairfax County taxes, we're paying Vienna taxes. Everything has gone up, from gases, from gas, government services, everything is going up. And I thought we would be a more conscientious council member, since we know the burden is on us as residents. I am a regular citizen, just like you, and I am advocating for changes. I've been the common sense decision-maker here, I've been the conscience for the council members. Yes, I have voted against a lot of the efforts that they have placed. It's because I know that it is impacting me, impacting my children, impacting my mother. And if we don't speak up, not just to the General Assembly, but to Fairfax County, about the decisions they're making on our life, and the way they're taxing our livelihoods, when are we going to see an end to that? At the rate that they are spending at Fairfax County level, and now here in Fairfax County? I ask you to vote for me because of what I have done for the town. I have walked, and I knocked the doors, and talked to you guys, and you have expressed concerns, and I have brought them to the town council awareness. Thank you. Vote for me, Sandra Allen.
Jessica?
Thank you for being here this evening, and thanks to those who are watching, who weren't able to be here in person. I really deeply value the engagement of all of the members of our community. I feel like whether we agree, or whether we have different points of view, the more people who are engaged in our process in the town, the more people who can share ideas, the more creative we will be, the better we will be at solving problems, and that teamwork is a core value to me. That's why I ran for council. I'm really energized to continue to serve in a second term, and I ask for your vote. I do seek out routinely, when we're considering issues in council, points of view from people who might not have the time to come to our meetings, who can't come to a public hearing, who might not know the best way to email council, but who have strong views, or who really care about an issue, and that matters to me. I don't think that members of our community should have to come to one of our meetings to be engaged in our work, because we all chose to live in Vienna, or are here to stay, and want to be a part of making the future of this wonderful place. And so those points of view, and that communication, again, really motivates me to want to do this, to serve on town council, for the town that is home to me, my husband, and my young children, to our friends, our neighbors, and our members of the community. In working with business owners, community organizations, and fellow council members, I consistently bring a creative and constructive way to working as a team, and I think that's a really important way to approach this job and this service. So thank you again for being engaged in this this evening, or for watching if you weren't here tonight. I ask for your vote. I'm Jessica Amakis. Thank you.
Dan?
Okay. So I'd like to thank Nevca for hosting this. I understand this is somewhat of an annual thing, or election cycle deal. I appreciate it. I enjoyed this. Excited that you guys have all turned out. I've been involved with the town, like I said, for about the last five years, through some encouragement of others. Wanted to get more involved, and I think this is a great opportunity for me to continue to give back to the town that I care about. Like I said, I've lived here for 21 years with my family, absolutely love it, and would like to try to keep it, the small-town feel that we all like, the sense of community that I think we all like, but also, we have to be, realize that growth is going to happen, and we need to kind of control that and get ahead of it, and figure out how we best can manage that for all of our benefit. One thing I did want to say, I put all these out earlier, but if you didn't get one, please grab one, and there's also the patch articles on all of us, so if you need to look up more about that. Kind of echo what Roy said. I think when you're deciding who to vote for, I think I would just strongly encourage you to try to vote for whoever you think are sort of the best decision-makers. I think Chuck mentioned it earlier, but there's going to be all kinds of things come up that we haven't currently thought about, so I don't know that being issue-specific is maybe the best approach. I think I would try to approach it from, who do you think are kind of the best decision-makers, and who do you think will work best together to kind of, I guess, get the most out of what all of us need? And with that, I would get, thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Doug?
Well, I want to thank you all for coming tonight. I also want to thank Nevca for, once again, putting together Stellar Event. Okay, I'm partial to the group. The one thing that Nevca really did was introduce me to people who are really committed to this community. I do feel that helped me get even more engaged, because they had specific topics that they creatively put together solutions to, and presented to the town council in a very thoughtful way, in order to get things done. Over 20 years, there's been a lot accomplished, and I feel very proud to have been a part of that, but been a part of this community. I do want to ask for your vote on November 4th, and feel that the future is bright for Vienna. As much as we can look at this community as dealing with difficult times, we are very fortunate to live in one of the best places in the country. Thanks.
Chuck?
So next year, we will be celebrating our semi-quintcentennial. I say that word a lot, just so I can make sure I get it right. Our 250th anniversary. We'll be acknowledging the ideals and principles of this great experiment in democracy, and tonight, I think, was the realization of those ideals, and this is what makes America's great. And I thank all of you for your engagement as citizens with your local government. I would like to thank Nevca, who has led the forefront on these candidate forums over the years, one of the very important services that they have held. I would also like to thank the wonderful people on our boards and commissions. One of the great honors of being a council member is interviewing these people, and they come in, and you say, "Wow, they have got qualifications, unbelievable qualifications. They should be sitting in our seat." And that's the final thing I would like to say. You should consider running for office at some point. You know, those of us here are not getting any younger, and we need the next generation. Until then, I offer up my services. I think I've basically shown you today who I am, how I think, and all the rest, and if you agree with that, then give me a vote on November the 4th. Thank you.
Howard?
It's been a great honor and privilege to have served the town council since 2009, and I'm running for reelection, so I want to continue to contribute, make a difference. I want to thank Nevca. You do this every two years, and it's always, I always look forward to these. My wife and I raised our two kids here, and this is our home. We love Vienna. Goodbye, our house. We just put a six-foot deer fence in, so we're not going anywhere. Hopefully, the deer hunt will help that, but we made the decision to put the deer fence. So my voting record, common sense approach, and responsiveness to our local government and citizens speaks to the passion and commitment I bring to the town council in Vienna. And I just want to echo what Chuck says. I've been doing this for 17 years. We need new people to step up and run for the council, because, you know, there's all saying, "If you think your ox is going to be gored, you're not there, you're in trouble." And so if you really care about Vienna, you know, we need, next two years, you need to come up, volunteer boards and commissions, run for council, you know, because, you know, the difference between success and failure in a lot of stuff is very small. So I ask you, hopefully, I ask for your vote, and if you haven't voted early, come vote November 4th. There's four polling locations now, I think, Cedar Lane, Cunningham Park, the Community Center in Madison. And so that's what happened when you changed the election from May to November. So again, thank you very much. I've enjoyed serving in the council. I think my wife was here, put us up this, so thank you.
All right. Mayor?
All right. Well, thank you, everyone, for coming, and of course, all the volunteers. And I want to thank the candidates. I mean, it takes a lot of courage, it takes a lot of time. I know the families, it's time away from your family, and it takes a lot of thought and a love for your town. And I know every person sitting here loves their town, and that was one of the things that I loved to hear, was how much everybody loves their town. And what I also loved to hear was the teamwork, and that is really important, that we work as a team, and I think we have done a good job, and I look forward to working with whoever gets elected this next time. I also want to tell you, I kind of relish in fighting for our town. So whether it's opposing a casino, it's restoring our WOD trail, telling Fairfax County that they need to give us the crossing guards to get our children to school, I have no problem. And any reporter that wants to come, I get out there and I talk to them, and you know what? I feel you all there with me. I really do. When I went down to Richmond, I was like, "I've got the town with me," you know, because really, I had not talked to anyone who was against, for a casino. And it made it very easy. I spoke to whoever would listen, whether it was the author of the bill, or whoever it was, I was speaking for all of you. So I thank you, because you give me a lot of confidence to do that, and you guys talk to me about it, and I think that's really important. Just a couple of things that were said tonight, I just want to correct. Business vacancies, we really have a very low business vacancy in Vienna. It's much lower than Fairfax County, and a lot of times, what you see is when a business has left, and another one is coming in, so it's going to be vacant for a little while. It's not that quick. I go to so many ribbon cuttings, we all do. It's amazing. I know Ace Hardware, it's very exciting. A whole bunch of other places have opened in Vienna. I won't speak on this long, but I would love to talk to you more about this later, and that's the pool and fitness center. I'm studying data and facts, and there's a lot of data and facts out there. Some of them you did not hear tonight. Some of us voted for that 1% meals tax increase to build the pool and fitness center in five years. So there is no, we have plenty of money in our CIP for other things. It's not just going to be used for the meal, for that. So it's a wonderful opportunity for people who don't have pools in their backyard, for people who can't afford to go to Westwood, who are on a waiting list for 11 years. So we can have more of that conversation, but it's going to be a whole town-wide conversation if we can get out to design and look at what it is that we want in the annex. So please, vote, encourage your neighbors to vote, your friends to vote, have them do the research first, of course, that's always very important. And like I always say, we are one Vienna, and I really, really believe that. We're one Vienna, because we support each other. We support each other on a council. We support each other as residents. We've got nonprofits and businesses that we support, too. So have a wonderful night, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. This concludes the debate and discussion for tonight.
Sure. Okay. Once again, I want to remember everyone that November 4th, there's an election for six council candidates, but there's seven on the ballot, so make sure that you only vote for six, okay? But in addition to that, on behalf of Nevca, I want to say that to all the candidates that mentioned their appreciation to Nevca, that it's a mutual admiration society. We very much appreciate all the kind, the good work you've done. We measured, we appreciate your measured responses today to all the questions. Thank you, Chuck, for moderating. Thank you for the moderating team. Thank you for all the help, and especially, how about a last round of applause to our candidates? Thank you. Thank you.